Okay, thanks guys, thanks for your patience. Meeting will come to order, Kevin, welcome. First, I don't think we have any prior minutes at this time to approve. So I will move on to correspondence. We have a couple of correspondents from the school department. Stated with the with the assessment preliminary assessment for 2021. I'm assuming that that is included, Chris, in the budget document that the selectmen are working on now?
Yes, yes, it is.
That new number.
Yeah.
It shows an increase of $90,000 or less than less than a percent on the but I need some clarification to that because they are working off of a different number than we are working off of in the assessment. Because we still owe the schools an additional $260,000 because they did not accept our number. And I won't go into that because we did have an agreement with them before we went to town meeting, but so when the superintendent speaks at the school committee and says, well, Dayton's increases only $90,000. It's not, it's $350,000 over what we had in our budget for last year. So know that most likely we will have a special at some point where we have to approve for free cash, but that will eat into next year's budget because our starting point is 260,000 over from where we were this year, so. When everybody thinks the 90,000 and you know, Rehoboth has already said, well, we're good with your new number. Well, ours is a little different because it was underfunded last year. Because they didn't come up with a number until after we set our levy limit, after we set our tax rate. So they put us behind the gun for this year, but we'll uh, we will figure it out and make it work, but that that people need to understand that that's that our number is really 350, not 90, so. That's what I have for correspondence. There is some additional correspondence that's still in the folder that if is the BP update there. As well as the conflict of interest forms for everyone to sign at some point when we get back together, so. Those two are still in the in the folder at at town hall. But that's all I have for correspondence, as well as there are probably seven beacons. I know Pete, you like to take a look at the beacons, so there's about seven of those in the folder. Under old business. I don't have any at this point. We talked about anything I have on the budget under the FY21 finances and the budget schedule, so I don't have anything under old business. If anyone has anything on old business? Anything they'd like to bring up? New business, so we have numerous transfer requests. Oh, I forgot to that this meeting is being held via Zoom under the mash, the governor's executive order in regards to the pandemic. Just wanted to make that clear because I think I was supposed to say that at the beginning of the meeting. We we do, we do have a couple of transfer requests in the folder. There was one that went way back, Chris, and and you, I talked to Carol today. There was one in regards to overtime in the assessors office going back to last August. That they were gonna be under. I asked her if she felt she would need that before May, and she said no. So we're just gonna file it.
She won't need it at all right now. She's she's only over by $25.61. And my guess is that there's probably enough money left probably in the members salary line item to, I mean, there's enough money within the within the personnel budget for her that she shouldn't have to cover it.
Right, yeah, that's what I said to her. She said she thought she'd have enough. I said, well, we're not gonna act on it then because we have, we have a couple of other big ones.
And I'll keep the committee apprised if if something changes, okay?
Yeah, the second one is a request to transfer from the reserve fund of $1,000 for conservation. The newly hired agent needs funds in the operating budget to carry on her duties. As I think most of us on the committee know that that the the board itself was handling a lot of the day to day and wasn't in any need of any any funds. But the selectmen have hired a true conservation agent. We're not utilizing one of the members, so it's a budget that we hadn't funded in the past. So we'll have to fund with a little bit of money moving forward. But they've made a request and from all the feedback I've gotten. The person is doing a great job and it's really necessary with some of the conservation issues that we have ongoing, so. Selectman Pacheco, I don't know if you want to talk on that at all?
No, she is doing a great job. You know, Charlie Mello used to do it before for them and he's not doing it anymore, so we had to hire somebody.
Yeah. So is there a motion to transfer $1,000 from the reserve fund? I think, Ken, before we do that, Chris, we have still around 50,000 in the reserve fund?
You haven't spent any money out of the reserve fund yet.
That's what I, that's what I thought. So until we get to the next one, which is a big one.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to transfer $1,000 from the reserve fund to other supplies in the conservation commission for field supplies, postage, and reimbursement for mileage?
The most.
Second. A second? Oh, Robert, are you taking notes today?
I was not.
Could you please? Because that will, that will warn, and then we have to warn any possible new members. Buck the last one in.
Ed, whenever you take a vote, because it's Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be by, yeah, yeah, got it, my role call.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Motion, motion has been made and seconded, Peter?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
All right, and the chairman votes high. So the second one is a request from the planning board. And the amount requested is $22,425. So I'll give you some history as it was explained to me by the the planning board. So I guess back many, 2008, Chris, is that from her notes?
That sounds about right, yeah.
There was a, there was a settlement and there there were fees paid by a developer that should have been in, I guess, kind of like a 53G account, but were in a separate planning board account, which the town, based on government regulations, dissolved in 2017 or 2018.
That sounds about right, yeah.
So the town, that money reverted into the general fund. So now the project has been reinvigorated or brought back to life. And that money, under a settlement agreement, should have been retained to be utilized for pay review. Any engineering fees that the town was 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 going have, going to enter into. So the amount of money is $22,425. So we have, we have, we have a couple of choices. We can partially fund it for what they think they'll need through this year and do make it part, the the rest of it, part of of any transfers we do at the end of the year to fulfill it. Or I guess since we are much closer to May, we could take it all out of the reserve fund now. Because originally I had said, I had told the planning board that's something we're gonna have to wait and do out of free cash. But since we haven't spent any of our reserve funds yet, it may be prudent to just do it out of the reserve fund. It still leaves us about 25,000, which in the past has always been a normal starting point going into May. I mean, Chris, do you see anything as you look at the budget, other than the ones you shared on the email today, that we could get caught up with between now and May 1st?
No, just just the ones that I pointed out so far. And I think the only other reason why you've been asked to consider utilizing the reserve fund is because there's a, you know, because it's a court settlement. There's an immediate need to either put that money back into a 53G account or to return it to the applicant. I mean, otherwise, I think we'd be recommending that we do this out of free cash. I've got a similar issue to deal with relative to rollback taxes in the conservation commission. And I'll explain later when you get to the new business section of the meeting.
Okay, okay. So I would recommend transferring $22,425 from the reserve fund, which will leave a remaining balance in the reserve fund after the two transfers tonight of $26,500 or $25,500. And this is for pay review fees of conservation, definitive subdivision plan of Forest Hills Estate, pursuant to a settle settlement agreement that the town entered into in to in in 2008.
And what account is that going into then?
It's being transferred to 010-0-940-000-70-5762. I'll send the scanned copy to you anyway, Robert, to uh, so you can have that to attach to the minutes. All right, thank you. So there's presently no money in that, so is there a motion to approve the transfer as listed?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And on discussion? Selectman Pacheco, do you have anything you want to add, because I'm sure you're familiar with this?
No, I'm nothing to add.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? On the motion, Kevin?
Hi.
Robert? Peter?
Hi.
And the chairman votes yes. All right, so Chris, could you just let Kerry know that tomorrow morning that it's all set? I'll send in the signed copies, I think. Have the board of selectmen voted on these transfers? Or they they don't, they'd actually?
They don't have to want these transfers.
Right, they don't have to want these. Okay, that's all I have for transfers. In reference to the budget schedule, I have not, Chris, I have not received the preliminary budget yet from the from the board of selectmen. Do you know what Pro Web? Where everybody is with that?
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape right now, Ed, I'll make sure that you get the link for that, for the preliminary budget, all right?
Can you send that out to the group? I'm gonna take, I will take last year's schedule and we you know, Peter, you still similar to as we go through every year with the accounting season, Robert, anything that that you have that would interfere with moving forward on the budget schedule? Kevin? Is there any? Any night that's better than another, Cap?
No, I mean, anything after Monday is usually okay, Tuesday through Thursday is good for me.
Okay, yeah, that's what it would be, it'd be normally like our Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday schedule. But I'm assuming we won't start probably for another three weeks. Normally, normally, I think we, and we try and get them done in that four week period, mid March to mid April. Ken, have you guys set the closing date for specials yet?
We may have, I don't know what it is.
Okay. Okay, I'll check on that, so. So that 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 will, that will be the budget schedule. With that, as we get into it, we we did have a couple of people over the last six months show interest in joining our committee. And Catherine Brown has graciously joined us tonight to introduce herself. And then Justin Torres, I did not hear back from him. I will reach out to him before one of our next meetings, I think. So a lot of people on the committee are familiar with Justin, he's the, he's the young up and comer, he's a, he's a, he's about, he's Nathan's age, he's about 26, 27. Lived in town his whole life, so I think he'd be a good addition as CJ was to bring some of the younger members of the community into into the fold, so. But Catherine, welcome, if you just want to give, I know you had sent a resume or a letter way back, but if you just want to give a little introduction and and let us know your interest in the finance committee and 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 introduce yourself to the to the committee.
Absolutely, so my last name has actually changed since I sent in my information, I'm Catherine Fornier now. I grew up in Rehoboth, I actually lived in Arizona a bit, and when I was in high school was involved in my city government there. It's always something I've been interested in, definitely want to get involved in Dayton as well. I've been here for about five years now, I have a son in kindergarten. As far as my background and why I'm interested in the finance committee, my background is in economics. So definitely interested in the money aspect and things like that. As far as work experience, that I think is fits really well in my current position. My title's a pricing analyst, but I actually do a lot more than that. I'm kind of the mini CFO for my division of the company, responsible for budget creation. You know, paying out money to our customers, to our vendors, things like that. As far as other jobs that I've had that relate kind of similar things, financial analyst positions and as well as more budget creation and things of that nature.
So are you familiar with what the role of the finance committee is?
Um, yeah, just kind of basic budget creation, things like that.
So, so what we are is we are an autonomous body to the government of the town. Our recommendations are made are made to the townspeople. So you know, our primary job is to review the budget and make recommend recommendations on any financial issue that the town may encounter. And it's through, and we don't report to the board of selectmen. We we are in oversight with only recommending powers. We don't, we don't actually vote to do it, other than transfers from the reserve account, which is really that and our own budget are the only budgets that are under the control of truly under the control of the finance committee. So it's a one year appointment. It's appointed every year at town meeting by bylaw by the town moderator. So and then when there is open spots within that fiscal year, the committee itself will appoint its replacement. So I I will tell you, once you're here, unless you want to leave, you're probably, you're here for as long as you want, I I've been here, I think this is my 19th year. So and it's the the good part is it is very autonomous, so you know, there is no, we we don't get political pressure. We don't take any political pressure, we do what's right for the townspeople, so.
Yeah.
You know, there's, it is a tough position to be in because people look at, it is the budget that creates the tax rate, so. So are there any questions of, do you have, do you have any questions for us before I open it up to the members of the committee, ask you any questions if they have them?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. All right, so I will warn you, we have one tradition on the finance committee. Who is person in becomes the clerk. So so if that sways you in any way, I just want to be totally upfront, that has been our tradition because except for when selectman Gulat, who loved being the clerk, loved to take all the notes, it has always been I have to beg and plead to, so so we we have created it to be the last person in. So if the next guy comes in before your next meeting, you could be off the hook.
Okay.
So are there any, any questions of of the members of the committee? So I would entertain a motion to appoint Catherine, what'd you say your last name was now?
Fornier.
Fornier. Catherine Fornier, what's your address?
It's 1565 William Street, Dayton.
Okay, Catherine Fornier, 1565 William Street, to be a member of the finance committee for the remainder of this current fiscal year.
The move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second. On the motion, Peter?
Yeah.
Robert?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Hi.
And the chairman votes high. So what will happen now, Catherine, is we'll send this, once I, we'll send this to the town clerk or the acting town clerk until the new town clerk starts, because our town clerk retired today. And you'll have to go into town hall or or reach out to them, because I'm not sure how they're doing the because you have to get sworn in and there's some things you have to sign. So I'm not sure how they they're handling that. I'll send you an email or myself or Leanne will send you an email on what what you need to do, so.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so make sure you stay the rest of the meeting, so. You might not be signed official, but you're here, you're you're part of the group now, all right?
Sounds good.
All right, well, wel- welcome, welcome, look forward to having you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so the next item is update on FY2021 finances and Chris, I'm gonna turn this over to you because you sent a really good email out earlier today that really helps us out in in seeing where we are.
Sure.
Did everybody get that? Did that go to everybody?
I, yeah, and I probably limited it to to you, Peter and Bob, I don't think I have Kevin's email address, Kevin, I apologize. Probably sent it off to Ken, Nancy, and Brett.
All right, I'll forward it to Kevin, so if you just want to touch on, I I know you sent all the reports out, but if you just want to touch on the points of that email, we can talk about them a little bit to 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 see where we're at.
Sure, sure, so I basically, so the reports are effective through today's date, which is not not standard fare, I mean, typically I'd like to cut off at the end of a month, but we haven't finished February yet, but anyway, besides that, revenue actually looks like it's in pretty good shape. The only, the only two revenue concerns I have right now are are building and plumbing inspections, revenue. We, I may have gotten a little aggressive based on where we ended at the end of fiscal 20. Fiscal 20 was a, was sort of a, I don't want to say a watershed year, but a but a good year because of the project at 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 the Aggie School. I think, you know, things will change depending on the timing of the permits to be issued relative to the three solar fields that are being planned or already have been planned and approved in the current fiscal year. I don't want to alarm anybody, but it just, you know, it building permit revenue looks significantly less compared to budget right now, based on current circumstances, but again, subject to change. A particularly good note, motor vehicle excise taxes, I understand that the bills were issued today, they actually went in the mail today, so you're all, Merry Christmas, Happy Birthday. Happy New Year, everybody. What we budgeted a million, 1,186. We've already committed a million 78 against what we've budgeted, that's just in the first commitment. I'd anticipate there being at least two or three, or I'm sorry, one or two additional commitments between now and June 30th. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna more than meet our estimate on on excise taxes.
Yeah, so so that that would offset some of what we're seeing on the building side, but the building side usually historically, as we get to the spring, I think that's where we normally bring in most of that revenue, so the fall and the spring. Granted, we, I mean, only for the last three weeks has the weather turned, but we'll, we'll see that in another month, we'll see, we'll see where that is.
I think, you know, just going forward, it would be prudent for me to make sure that there aren't any unusual permits in, you know, in in a given year and just take out the outliers, you know, in 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 the estimating process. The other, the other revenue source, and it's not significant to the general fund anyway, but I just want to point it out, investment income right now, so it keeps in the banks, and I mean, we're practically having to pay to put our monies in the bank rather than getting paid for leaving it there. So interest income revenue is is gonna be down a little bit in the general fund, although it's doing, we're doing famously on the OPEB trust fund right now because of market value changes, so I will say that. Beyond that, there are a couple of revenue items, tax title revenue, I I mentioned to everyone, we don't budget it. So it's a, it's a direct positive impact of free cash. Right now through February 24th, we've collected over $90,000 in tax title revenue. It'll project out to 135 right now. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it go higher. There's over $1 million in tax title balance outstanding, you know?
What's been the trend over the last three years on that?
It keeps going, it it's going the wrong way, Ed, we we really, you know, there really needs to be an emphasis on finding ways to gather that revenue, and it's like, not that I I'm not, I'm not a proponent for making the town a landlord and kicking people out of their properties, but the town had, the town has a right to collect that tax revenue and you know, you, if there are property, we're not, if anybody is in tax title and they've been in there for more than 10 years, we're not doing anybody any favors allowing it to keep accumulating at 16% interest. You're not doing, it it's, it's, it's going the wrong way. And we have to consider doing some other things.
Chris, can I ask, is is there any procedure or policy that we're following as far as, like you said, I mean, at 10 years? No, no, nobody's making out on that?
No, unfortunately, there's no policy, I mean, the only so so one of the alternatives, Peter, would would be to factor those receive, you know, sell the receivables off, they have companies that will buy the titles. The the problem I, the the problem that I understand, so right now we we hold the lien. Taxpayers have some protection, okay, so we're not the big bad tax man that everyone thinks that we are. Once you, once you sell those properties or once you sell the rights to those liens, the protections that are that are guaranteed to the property owners go away. The courts don't look as favorably when someone owns those liens privately as opposed to the town owning those liens publicly. So you know, there's a bit of caution there and again, I I, you know, I I want to tread lightly, I mean, it's a very sensitive subject. I would never want to see the town put anybody out on their, you know, on that back, especially in the the pandemic, but there is an awful lot of money, you know, you're tying up an awful lot of resources in in tax title right now.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on a couple of things that were listed here. On the snow and ice budget, what did we overspend by last year?
998, that, sorry, Ed, I I should know this off the top of my head, it was significantly less than the year before.
Right.
Yeah. 75,000 maybe is what comes to mind right now.
Okay, so this one will be a little bit higher this year than than last year, but I think we've had, I don't think we had any snow last year at all, so.
Hardly any.
Yeah. So my, the my last two questions, because yeah, we talked about the school budget already. Can someone, I know that we've been applying for CARES Act for border health, and I know they've had a lot of done a lot of work, but what has the oversight been? Because $20,000 for two people in overtime is pretty significant in the border health. So what has the oversight been on overtime in the border health? And I and I understand the what what the nurse has been doing along the way. But from an administrative standpoint, I I mean, I don't know what they're doing behind the scenes. I hear a lot of people screaming about, you know, what is our border health doing, how on vaccinations? I know I had one meeting with Brett and and the board of health and gave them some ideas and never, that to my knowledge, has never materialized, so I'm just trying to understand, you know, what is the split on the 20,000 between our border health agent and administrative?
15, so it's 15 in the border health and it's about 6,500 in the border health administration, so agents about 6,500, border health, Rosalind, sorry, I shouldn't, um, border health is 15,000.
So so basically, she's made about 35% above her salary just in overtime.
That'd be about right.
So what what is the oversight that's going on on overtime in the border health? I I mean, that's pretty significant.
It would, I mean, the oversight would have to come from the the border health itself.
So the question's really directed to the board of selectmen, and I and I don't know if Ken can answer that or if if we need to, I'm I'm sure you guys have had the discussion, because I'm sure you guys have seen the same thing.
Yeah, we, in fact, they met with us last night, and they're gonna meet with us again in two weeks, our next meeting. They're indicating to us that they need the overtime for contact tracing. And we know the numbers are going down, so they should be less. But they're also indicating to us because we may regionalize with cotton and other communities for vaccinations, which would involve them, but we offered volunteers, commission on disability offered to help with the vaccination, not give the shots necessarily, but guide people through some of the paperwork.
Yeah.
So we don't have specifics, but the odd, from now on, they're gonna meet with us at every board and selectmen's meeting and discuss what they've been doing. I haven't asked for specifics when they tell us they're working Saturday and Sunday for contact tracing. I haven't asked, how many have phone calls have you made and that kind of stuff, but they?
Yeah, okay, I I just wanted to make sure that there's some oversight, because that is a significant spend that's obviously unfunded, I mean, we are, we we probably had a what, $1,000 or $2,000 in overtime in that budget? So we're gonna have to transfer money in there, I'm assuming at some point.
So what'll happen now is is CARES will reimburse us for that overtime. So it's just a matter of, what we have to do is reclassify the expenses to the CARES fund. And then and then seek reimbursement through CARES, CARES will reimburse us for that. I just, I just wanted to point it out that the overtime is significant.
It it is, it is, and and I had heard that from someone else, so that's why when I saw it on your list, I appreciated that. And I just wanted to get some clarification on it. So and this is just as an aside, Ken, since you brought it up, because that was one of the ideas was I had asked, I bought a health Um, so, and this is just as an aside, Ken, since you brought it up, because that was one of the ideas was I had asked our border health agent at the um, meeting that I had with, it was myself, Chief McGee uh, and Brett, that we, because I know we, for some reason, we didn't sign a compact with Swansea Somerset, but Taunton is really a great place for us to sign a compact with because they have a lot more access to vaccines than, than we would as a community. So i- is, has that moved along?
Well, I believe that Chris had a, a meeting today on this. But the problem is the state is no longer giving them, giving vaccines to individual towns. So they're trying to regionalize it. So
Right.
Taunton has contacted us. They want six or seven, eight communities to get together. They will do it in Taunton, the vaccinations, but we would be eligible for the vaccination. Somerset and Swansea, I believe that they're gonna, the state is going to stop giving the vaccines. I know the town of Eastern is not going to get vaccines anymore. So, and I, I believe Fall River is also trying to regionalize in the area.
Yeah, yeah, because what they've done is if you look out towards western part of the state in like green, there, there was a whole community in, in that corridor that has come together and they are getting vaccines because they regionalized it. And I recommended this about three weeks ago to, to, because the, the fire chief didn't want to, the, actually, the Somerset chief did not really want to sign anybody more, any other towns on. And I said Taunton would be the perfect place, and they are, because that's why I'm surprised on the Fall River one, because if they sign all of Fall River, Fall River gets priority because it's a city. As Taunton's getting more of a priority, and just because they say they're not giving it to the, directly to the towns, Taunton has an agreement with Brewster Ambulance, and Brewster is one of the suppliers that is still getting vaccines to run uh, some of the community uh, programs, so. Um, yeah, I think Taunton's a good way to go.
Yeah, we've, we've been asked to uh, send a letter to the uh, State Senator Mark Pacico and uh, State Representative Pat Hadad to support this. They're in favor of it, but we're writing a letter.
Yeah.
For the last night to write a letter to support it. So we're hoping the next couple of weeks we want to hear something on this. But I believe, Chris, did you have a webinar today or you have some kind of a meeting today on that?
Yeah, we actually had two, we had two meetings. Uh, one was sort of a little preliminary. The second one was with all of the border health uh, representatives from the communities that have been asked by Fall, uh, Fall River, you know, their interest and whatnot. Um, I think the conversation was more geared towards the border health people and, and the, and the medical professionals than it was for me. Um, I wasn't really gleaning a lot. Um, the optics and the economics don't really make a lot of sense to me right now, and I, I I don't think you really want to hear what I have to say because it won't be kind. Um, I think that, I think the idea is noble, but I think we're wasting an awful lot of taxpayer resources. You already have the infrastructure in Foxborough. And you already have the infrastructure at Fenway Park and you have the infrastructure at Worcester. If we want to help, we probably should be lending a hand up in Foxborough. Let's transport people to Foxborough. It'll cost a lot less money than buying refrigerators and freezes that will only use one time.
Yeah, but there, there is a, the, there is a large portion of, of all communities that will struggle whether you provide the transportation or not. That you have to, if you think about the regular flu vaccine, the only way that it's so successful is because you make it available and you, and because we are, let's be realistic. We are a lazy society. We have a lot of people who don't want to take that extra step. So a- and for us, Fall River's not the way to go. I know in a lot of, but, but for Dayton, the most economical and easiest access for the residents of Dayton is Taunton. And I think we, you know, we have to look at it that way. I get the math, for, for, for uh, certain age brackets, making sure that Foxborough is the, the way to go, but the most senior community that we have, it's very difficult for them to get to. That, and, and I saw it with my in-laws who live in Taunton, that they, they weren't able to go and get theirs until they held that clinic at Taunton High School where they could call in, make an appointment and go. So I, I think that the signing on with Taunton and them getting a location similar to like what they just did in Dartmouth with Circuit City, until the state realizes that Foxborough is not Bristol County. You know, southeastern Mass, the southeastern Mass part of Bristol County needs additional mass locations.
I, I think, you know, for, for the, for the elderly population, and I have, I have no doubt, but I, I, you know, it just, you, you think about the populations in these cities or, well, between Taunton and Fall River, and the fact that they can only inoculate seven hundred and fifty people a week. I, you know, I don't know if everybody is ready for the buy-in as to how long it's going to take to inocu-, assuming that nobody in Bristol County decides to go to Foxborough beyond anybody that already has. You're going to be into this for an awfully long time.
But you know what it is, Chris? The, it has to be expanded, not, it has to be expanded outside of the mass sites. And until you have more sites with more opportunities, that's when it ramps up. So I think the J and J thing next week is, will, will make a difference. That's a little bit off topic, but I just wanted an update from the border health side, so. So that, that's all I have on Chris's um, updates. Anybody have any other questions in regards to our current FY twenty-one uh, finance questions? All right, public input. So let's see, who signed in first? I think Jen, you signed in first, so I'm gonna ask you if you have anything you want to add first, and then Lenny, and then we'll go to Ken.
I don't have anything in particular at this time. Just thank you all for all the hard work that you're doing um, meeting in and meeting out. All the time, I'll be, you know, hopefully attending more as they come up through budget season, just pay attention to what's going on, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jen. So if anybody, so Jen, Jen is a candidate for border selectmen as well as Len Hall. And Lenny, they both joined us tonight to keep up on uh, what we have going on uh, from a finance committee. So Lenny, if you have any questions?
Well, actually I do. I was wondering the preliminary selectmen's budget. Um, how would I go about getting a copy of that?
So, you, you require it from the border selectmen, from the board of selectmen's office.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
And, and as we go through this line, that, that stuff will also be, um, we'll make sure it's posted on the town website.
Awesome.
That, that, that the preliminary, the, the link to the preliminary budget is, is posted on the uh, town website. Now, I understand. With lots, with lots of caveats, that that is not the official budget. That is the proposed budget that is being worked on by both the border selectmen for their recommendations and the finance committee, so.
Having been involved with the school committee, I'm, I'm aware of that. Will this meeting also be posted um, on the TV channel?
Uh, yeah, however the board of selectmen's office handles it after this. We are not all cable, however they handle it after this, that's beyond us. We'll record it. It's there. I'm not sure what they do with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yep.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks, Len. Ken, do you have, Ken, do you have anything?
I just want to say, I got my shot money at Gillette. My wife got hers uh, today. We've both got a second dose coming up in another month. It's very efficient. It is great. You know, I'm able to drive there, but there are seniors in town that aren't going to, they're homebound and unable to to assist. I know that Jen's going to help us as a member of the commission on disability. Uh, we're gonna con-, they're gonna contact us and we're gonna try and get appointments for them. Obviously, if time becomes available, that's going to be great for a lot of these uh, these folks. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Well, congratulations on your first shot, Ken. So, does anybody else have anything they want to add? So, Catherine, do you, um, I'll send you an email, but can you reach out to me sometime uh, either this week or over the weekend, and I'll just fill you in on, on anything that, any questions that you think of uh, afterwards?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Chris, you have anything you want to add before we?
Yeah, so before you go, new business, or I guess under new business head. So getting back to the settlement that you funded with a reserve fund transfer for the planning board. Um, I want to catch everybody up. So we have rollback taxes in the town of Dayton, and rollback taxes are basically for uh, landowners, landowners that are taking advantage of what they call uh, land restrictions or land reclassifications, people that are either uh, agricultural nature, horticultural, or they have forest land. What happens is, is when, when people apply for that, that classify, when they apply for a classification restriction, they get a huge reduction in the value of their property. And when the property is sold or exchanged and the cha-, and the uh, the, the, the use changes on that land, um, basically the town is allowed to, I think they, they're allowed to recapture up to ten years of uh, taxes on what would have been taxed if they were being taxed at full value. Um, part of those rollback taxes went directly into the conservation commission's uh, fund that was established. I believe it was back in uh, for right now, I'll tell you two thousand and eight, for lack of a better, for not, not knowing exactly what the date was. I was unaware that um, town meeting had petitioned the legislature back in two thousand and two for the right to establish this fund and to completely earmark rollback taxes into that fund. So the exact, the existing law, chapter forty, section eight of uh, of mass general law, what that allows for the creation of the conservation commission um, also allows town meeting to transfer money into that fund and that only. So there was no earmarking. I didn't realize that there was legislation subsequent to chapter forty, section eight that allowed them to keep the, or effectively get the rollback tax figure. So anyway, fiscal twenty, I closed sixty thousand dollars out of the conservation commission's fund and transferred it to the general fund, which then in fact went into free cash. Um, I'm now left with the um, unfortunate situation where we have to return that money to the conservation commission's fund because that is the current law in Dayton.
All right, well, the good thing is we still have nine hundred thousand dollars of free cash, of which sixty thousand of that came from, from that. So my recommendation would be that the board of selectmen place an article on the warrant and we walk through that at, at special town meeting prior to uh, annual town meeting and, and we put that money back because that's, that's where it belongs. I, we actually, I, I think back when we had the, the, I don't know what the development, Somerset Woods, when we, when we did that appeal, that I think we asked the conservation to tap that to utilize towards um, that appeal. And I don't know what's happening with Strawberry Fields, but some of that money, um, because it's under conservation control and they are the appealing authority, could be used towards uh, any appeals that they have. It was the board who chose they didn't want to use those funds. Even though they just sit there and collect, we're not sure exactly what they've used them for, but. Um, so yeah, it, it belongs in that fund until such time that we um, make a determination that we don't want to have that fund anymore.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so unless, unless any other member of the committee objects to taking it out of free cash and putting an article to put it back, I think that's only the and it's a good thing we caught it in the year that the free cash that's there, that's where part of it came from. So um, it, it makes sense. So, hey Nancy, so, sorry, I didn't see you sitting over there. I don't know how long.
No, I'm sorry. I just came on. I've been, and I just signed on. I heard you went to Strawberry Fields?
Yeah, I did. That was just, uh, and, and we, we, we never, we're not talking about it all. It was just because we mentioned the conservation sixty thousand dollars.
There, there. As you know, all, probably all know, Strawberry Fields was given the go-ahead by the zoning board. And they waived just about, I guess, everything in town. And uh, everybody's bylaws, rules, regulations. Uh, obviously, the CONCOM and the Clean Water Act and all that other good stuff is, is, has still got to be followed. Um, the CONCOM had planned or attempted or whatever to appeal the decision, but it was not based on the same appeal that, that was successful a few years ago. And it did come before the board of selectmen and um, they were appealing it as a butters. The CONCOM does not own the property. They control it. The town of Dayton owns the property that abuts this. It would have to be the board of selectmen who would appeal as a butters. And since the basis for the appeal is not what we were successful with years ago, uh, the board of selectmen voted not to spend town money on it. The appeal as a butters is not going forward from the town of Dayton. Uh, the money in the conservation commission account, to the best of our knowledge, cannot be used for legal fees. And again, the board voted not to spend town money.
I, I'm assuming the neighbors are, are appealing it any, any?
Yes, they are following it, but they, I believe, are following the same case they had years ago, which was, we know was successful when we appealed D E P. But as a butters, we really had no standing, uh, we meaning the town of Dayton. And that's what I said, that I couldn't support it uh, based on who owns the property, which is in effect the town of Dayton.
Okay. All right, so Nance, we were actually um, wrapping up, so I don't know if there's anything from a finance standpoint that you wanted to bring up, but we are, we are um, just gonna wait, Chris is gonna send us the link to the budget. We're gonna put the budget schedule together. Um, we have a new member, Catherine Fournier, who's joined us tonight. Uh, we voted her in tonight. She's gonna uh, reach out to the acting clerk until I think, uh, which I guess would be Pam right now, until the new person starts um, to get herself sworn in. So we will be up to five members.
Oh, good.
And um, hoping that maybe someone who's not running for selectmen may be interested in joining the finance committee. Because she was a very, she was, she was a longtime, very valuable member of this committee, so, but we appreciate it, so.
It has entered my mind, but I also told my colleagues that the appointments that they, we made last June are annual appointments. Um, if the new board of selectmen wishes, my appointments actually can run through the beginning of June when we reappoint. The only position I can't hold is uh, the advisory board on the county, because you must be a selectman. Um, that includes the stormwater committee. And uh, so when the new board of selectmen has their first meeting and organizes, they need to let me know what my status will be. Uh, if they say they want me to continue, I have made the commitment to do it, at least through the end of the, the appointment, the beginning of June. Um, obviously, the stormwater committee wants me to continue, and what we know is, as a a finance committee member, I cannot hold another
Right, right, right.
So it'll all get resolved when the board of selectmen, the new board, meets, organizes and tells me basically what they want me to do. If I am not going forward through the rest of the appointment, period. Obviously, I'd be willing to help out with um, uh, back on the finance committee. Um, because as you know, I joined the finance committee, well, you and I, all right, we're the old guys. As uh, hey Ken, that doesn't mean age, that just means.
Two thousand and two.
Yes, so, um, well, they refer to it as elder statesman at the board of selectmen. That's Ken and that's me, okay, but um,
It's okay.
I could still, I could still represent the town at MMA, because when I was first appointed to MMA, which was almost twenty years ago, uh, I was on the finance committee way back then, and I've been with the same committee, so. Um, and obviously, there's one member on the MMA committee who is a couple of months ahead of me. We, we think we're gonna go for twenty years and strive for a cold watch. Um, obviously, I would like the connection to remain with MMA because um, once we got our community compact cabinet designation, it has brought grant money to this town that's I think is well over a million dollars at this point. But, but anyhow, um, I won't close the door on the FinCom, obviously. Um, I do have one financial question. How much money do we owe Dayton Rehabith? And did you guys decide, is there going to be a warrant article to transfer from free cash to cover it?
So, so it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, that's why, I, I'll just give you the quick notes on it. It's two sixty. We're gonna do, we'll most likely do a free cash transfer um, as a special article. Um, secondarily, just be aware when, you know, Dr. Azar sent that preliminary assessment over that said ninety thou-, our increase was only ninety thousand, it's technically three hundred and fifty, because we, we were, what we voted last year was two hundred and sixty short because they never did what they agreed to do. So our increase
To add it together.
Yeah, our increase is really three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not ninety thousand dollars. So um, that discussion needs to take place with the school committee.
All right, so on that note, since the finance committee is here, um, the D R Financial Advisory Committee, uh, that was you and I think Robert and I, I was representing the board of selectmen. I haven't heard anything.
So I asked the superintendent about that, and he said, that's not his committee. It's
I was gonna say that.
It's up to the committee to create their own. You and I both know that's not how it was done for many, 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 many years that we, we did it, going back to when Bob Pixodo was our at-large member and he and I, and I think it was Kevin, who, who, who sat on that committee. It was it, yes, it wasn't the superintendent's committee, but the school committee was involved. It was, it, yes, it wasn't the superintendent's committee, but the school committee was involved. And the superintendent or the business manager set up the meetings, so, um, you know, he's throwing his arms up. It's really up to the school committee to, um, put it together, I don't know how they want to do it, so.
When they backed away from it a year or two ago, whenever that happened, it was, oh, that's part of the regional agreement, we don't do that. Well, who's supposed to carry out the regional agreement? The school committee.
Exactly, so, so I will, um, I'll send a, I'll send a note to, um, I don't even, who, who is the chair, is Rachel the, who's the chairman now?
Well, no, right, do it right now, because right now it's Tom O'Conne.
Oh, Tom O'Conne, I'll send Tom a note tomorrow and ask him what, uh, what his, what, what, what the plan is for the financial advisory committee.
And we realize it's in the regional agreement, but the, the elected officials that are supposed to enforce and quite frankly obey that agreement. Is the school committee.
Yep, yep.
So, um, last night, the board of selectmen, um, uh, at the meeting. Um, we would, we were talking about the meeting, a meeting had been set up with Dr. Azar, Paul Kitchen and a few other people. Uh, about the proposed regional, uh, budget. And I asked to be, uh, allowed to sit in on that and the board agreed. So we had to change the date to March the seventeenth at nine thirty, but we're planning to have a Zoom meeting for about an hour. Um, because, um, I asked to sit in because obviously I T A is brand new. And his experience as far as school budgets has not been with region school districts. Yes, they have a local district, uh, school department in Rockland and he would have had some involvement with Norfolk Aggie because he worked for the county. But as I said last night, our regional school district is unlike any of those. I'll leave it at that, so, um, so anyhow, the board of selectmen agreed that I should sit in on that. Uh, to, to hear the presentation and, and to kind of be another set of ears to help, um, Mike Mullin with his new position.
And the fine, and, and let him know that the FINCOM is here for anything he needs on that too, because we have a deep knowledge of, of that. Uh, how that, how that piece works and, um, what games they'll try and play. Games they'll try and play or gamesmanship they will try and play during that process, so.
Well, as I said last night at the, uh, selectmen's meeting also, uh, we're in year two of the Department of Education. Controlling the budget for the department, they are also involved in providing oversight for year three. And if at town meeting in June, uh, the two towns don't come together, uh, with whatever the demand is going to be. Uh, we're gonna have them on, with us for another year, um, and so it would. I'm looking forward to the day when we return to local control of the school budget, period. And I say local, I mean, the regional agreement, excuse me, the regional school district as it was set up, nine to twelve, a K to twelve, a pre-K. In other words, Department of Ed, we can handle it, please. Let us do our thing, uh, but.
Like, like we, like we did, like we did for many years, so.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank, thanks Nancy, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Peter? Robert, Robert, Kevin?
Hi.
Thanks, thanks everyone for coming out today. Hey Peter, do you have two minutes for me to call you? I gotta ask you a question on some of the stuff I dropped off to you today.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a call. Thanks guys, have a great, everybody stay healthy.
Thank you, you too.
Good night.
Good night.